On this meeting's order at 6:32 PM. First order of business for the meeting is nominations for Chair and Vice Chair.
I nominate Jeff Friedman as Chairperson.
Second? Any discussion?
I would just like to say I've been Chair for the last six years. It's been an honor. And I think this year's gonna be a really challenging year. Budget issues are getting harder and harder. I think we need to go for an override. And the timing of that doesn't align with the election, if you're honest with you. And so I think it's really important to have a Chairperson that will 100% still be here next May. And I'm just fortunate to work with such good people here. And I think Jeff has done an amazing job in his first few years. And so I'm very happy to turn the gavel over to Jeff as a Chair. I think that's a nomination.
Any other discussion? If you have a vote, all in your favor?
Aye.
Closed? Who votes?
For nothing.
Mr. Chair.
So I think we need a new Vice Chair, too, I believe. So, any nominations for the Vice Chair position?
I nominate Tim Sublin as Vice Chair.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. We vote on Vice Chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Even us?
Four-nothing.
Four-nothing. Yeah, I'm not used to this. I think we have two meetings to chat.
Yeah.
Right? I gotta write this down. I think we wanna wait. Do we wanna wait?
I think we need legislative representative.
Do I hear any nominations for the legislative representative?
I nominate John Leeders.
Second? We have a nomination, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Or nothing? Even us? For the position of Secretary, do I hear any nominations?
I nominate Noelle Rudolph as Secretary.
Second? We have a nomination, we have a second. Discussion? You sure you don't wanna take that one off the top?
I wanna be nothing.
To be nothing. Never. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Or nothing? Even us? Excellent. So, alright, so going on to the next scheduled bit of business. Why don't we go on to the public input? Anybody having public input this evening? Make it interesting? Alright, hearing none. Why don't we move on to the student report. Ms. Palmer?
Hi. So for notable academic matters, the AP exams are continuing throughout this week. Student recognition night is May 14th. And the Chamber of Commerce dinner is this Thursday. So that's when like the top 5% of seniors go to dinner. And then notable fine arts matters, the Mean Girls was nominated for 12 awards. And they're going to the Sondheim Award Ceremony this weekend. And they will be performing a song from the show on Saturday. Yulalia Aganis was nominated for Best Actress. Caitlin Milligan was nominated for Best Supporting Actress. And Vinnie Constantino, I think, was nominated for Best Supporting Actress. And notable athletic matters are baseball is versing Lynn Field today at home. Girls tennis is versing Ipswich today at home. And boys tennis is versing Ipswich today away. And the girls and boys track won their senior night. And other are for this club, DECA. This fundraiser was last Friday. Slam applications, decisions came out for students. And club officer elections are shutting up. And then for my student work report, I didn't have physical project to show you, but I can kind of explain my art project. So I'm gonna be painting a picture that kind of describes Sonder, which is kind of the idea that everyone, no matter what it looks like from on, like an outside perspective, is something going on in their life. And no matter how everyone is fixed to their own life differently.
Wow, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Comments?
How'd you come up with that topic?
I kinda just think it's kinda overlooked, almost, that it seems like everyone has a perfect life from the outside. You're kind of showing the best or whatever, but it's not really like that.
And a perfect life, not so many of you.
Yeah, exactly.
That's really interesting.
I would just say I also congratulate Mrs. Kane. She was nominated as Best Director. And so it's three years in a row where she's been nominated as the Best Musical. So, wonderful.
How's the softball season going?
It's going really good, yeah.
What position do you, what position do you play?
At first base.
So what year are you?
10th grade.
Excellent. What else do you do, other than have fun with softball?
I play soccer all year round, and I play for the school in the fall. I do basketball in the winter, and then softball in the spring. And then I'm involved in like many different clubs and activities. Kind of like DECA, Molly UN, Interact Club. And I'm an officer for DECA, actually.
So you're pretty bored.
Yeah.
Well, good for you. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for presenting. You can stay if you want. But you can also go, because it sounds like you are busy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to any continued business. Do you have any opinions?
Nothing.
Okay, so why don't we go on to the Bachelor presentation? Sir?
Thank you, thank you. Welcome to the Bachelor School. I'm just standing here thinking, I can't believe it's been a year. Almost to the day that we did our annual presentation to the school committee last year. I think we have 27, 26 days, 26 days left in the school year. And I think we need about 36 or 40 just to get everything done that we need to get done between now and June 20th. But happy to have you all here tonight. Congratulations on your appointments and reelections and all of that. We are pleased to have you here tonight. We have a couple of different and unique presentations tonight, I believe. We talked a little bit about some academic things. And some physical education, social-emotional things. And we're gonna start, actually, with kind of a mini brag, I would say. In the fall, we present to you our school improvement plan goals. Those goals are written using our iReady data. And along with Ms. Callen and the school leadership team. In a school council, we came up with goals using our growth targets. And we started this, I think it was two years ago. Two years ago, we made the switch between being on grade and, you know, grade level and below and percentages. But we thought that a better measure would be to determine the percentage of students that met their annual growth targets. In iReady, students take a beginning-of-the-year assessment and assign a target. So their annual growth target is, you know, starts here and ends there. So we thought that would be a year worth of instruction. Well, students should at least grow a year. And we thought that could be the best way to determine their growth and learning. So I included in the packet, I think I might have mentioned this before, but we were, the Bachelor School was an iReady super-stretch school for last school year. And what that means, students are assigned a annual growth target and a stretch growth target. And one of the unintended consequences of using those growth targets and the growth target is that our stretch targets were basically crushed. And Ms. Callen, who's here in two different roles tonight, but she is an interventionist and also a daily in Title I data as well, in some capacity. But 62% of our students, yes, 62% of our students met or exceeded their stretch growth targets. And we were recognized by iReady to be included in their spring mood letter. And we were invited on June 3rd to present our best practices and strategies in reaching growth targets to their collaborators. Not sure really who's gonna be there. But Suzanne Callen and I were interviewed by the people at iReady. And we were included in their spring mood letter. I believe there's some hot topics. If anyone needs one, I'd have a few extra coffees. And we were given a sign, a sign, and it was kind of blank when it showed up. And just, we had the idea of having all of our educators and our professionals sign our sign. Because it is a collective effort. It's, you know, from the bottom all the way up. I, you know, I'm not in here day-to-day instructing students, but it's everybody. We have an opportunity to sign the sign. And we're gonna hang that up in the library at some point, probably over the summer when we get a moment to breathe. But we're really proud of the fact that we were recognized as the number-one elementary school in the state to present lives to reach those stretch growth targets. So we was kind of, we wanted to share and let you know that we were recognized. And so, yeah, any questions on that?
Well, not so much a question as a comment. I remember us discussing this last fall and talking about the way you would measure success. And just wanna appreciate the fact that finally you measured success, you more than exceeded the target. So, awesome. Great work.
It was, thank you. I very much appreciate that. But it was a good conversation with the people at iReady. Because they kept focusing on stretch growth, stretch growth, stretch growth. When we kept pulling it back to, Suzanne, if you wanna add to this, but just to our annual growth targets. That, well, we thought was the most important metric. And that unintended consequence was the stretch growth. No, you didn't? I'm shy.
Mr. Maloney, just one, can you put in context of 62% meeting or exceeding the stretch growth? What is the average for meeting or exceeding the stretch growth? Do you know from iReady?
32%.
So you almost, so in other words, you almost tell them. You, you, you don't have to be bashful. It's a good thing.
It's, he talks about kids, he talks to kids all the time about the work and the process and the effort that is put into these things. And we read a study, and it was on Hume Lab, and he was talking about, and it was a study that was done where there was 100 students in one group and 100 students in another group. In one group, they were praised upon the outcome, on the grade, on the success. And the other group was praised upon the effort regardless of the outcome. And they did a lot of doing a study where the students that were praised upon the effort and the process were, had a great capacity to overcome and to solve problems and be more successful down the line. Whereas the students that were praised on the outcomes weren't as resilient, weren't as able to overcome when they didn't get the success that they were expecting. So we've been, over the last two or three years, really focusing again on, you know, don't praise the outcome, praise the effort. And I think that's the collective piece of this, where the outcomes are gonna take care of themselves if we put in the work and if we do the thing, so.
Well done, no less.
Thank you. So, connecting to goals, which might be a theme. We have an unwritten goal, and I think I might have shared this at our school committee presentation in the fall. We made it a focus of ours to increase our community and our spirit in getting to know everybody in the building. And this went back to some of our work that we did about noon of day. And, you know, where students learn their teachers for next year. It was a story that I think, some feedback from students that we received that they were disappointed when they learned their teacher's name. But then when they went into the classroom, they were excited because it was the teacher that they wanted. They just had the name on. So, it can happen, right? So we made it a focus to increase that, to get more face time to, with everybody in the building. And we had this unwritten goal. And one of the ideas that we had been kicking around for a few years, and I wanna invite Ms. Callen and Ms. Weiss. Ms. Weiss is our physical education teacher, also data five coordinator, curriculum coordinator for PE. Ms. Callen, that we've already introduced, and Ms. Gavin, who also has her winter games. You know, I'm not, I'm not dressing down this here, but this is our uniform for tonight. So we were kicking around this idea, and I'll let Ms. Weiss and Ms. Callen take over here just to explain what the Bachelor Games were started, what the purpose was. And, you know, maybe we might even participate in a couple of events if we're lucky.
Thank you. So again, I'm Beth Weiss, I'm a PE teacher here. And Suzanne Callen, and then Carrie Gavin also, is part of our crew in creating the Bachelor Winter Games. So this did come from, originally, from Mr. Maloney. Suzanne and I communicating after a field day, like how much fun it is and how much greater community involvement we have during that time. And how we'd like to be able to bring that more into the school as well. Since we go over and use the turf, and we, you know, we, we have a long day set for that. We needed a little more. So we started meeting together on like almost a weekly basis. And trying to put something together. And our whole point was that we wanted every person involved. So we picked a date in January, the end of January, assuming that it wouldn't be snowing or really cold. And had no idea what it was gonna fully look like when we started. But we knew we wanted to use all the spaces we could in the building, as well as outside of the building. And we were hoping for good weather. It actually rained that morning, and that was incredibly unexpected. So it was not as cold as we would have liked, but it was still great. So we chose January 31st. It was all day, so most of the morning was taken up. And then they broke for lunch and recess during different times. And then they came back for closing ceremony at the end. What we did at the very beginning is we determined that we wanted groups to be working together. So we paired up classes, so our older students with younger students. And it wasn't necessarily this grade level working with this grade level, but it was more just how can we merge some people together that maybe don't work with each other very frequently. And so everyone was involved, including our cafeteria staff, our custodians. Ms. Callen came up with this amazing idea to make these shirts. So we all were wearing the same shirt all day. And our parent organization was so helpful in the whole process. They funded our shirts. They helped fund a lot of the things that we're seeing. And our goal for the day was to, we do so well in our academics. It's fantastic, but our goal was to increase our students' feelings of belonging, to be able to build a stronger school-wide community, or support our character development, and promote healthy competition. And the way we really did that was by having art, music, PE, and SEL all throughout the building throughout the day. So our art teacher, we were in conversation with her. We said we kinda wanted to do a mural that we could maybe put up. And she put this idea together. And then each student in the school was able to paint a part of it. And including staff and the building on the wall. And our music teachers put together some different music songs they were singing throughout the day. A lot of the activities were physical education-based. And we did have an SEL activity as well, which you'll see on our slides in a little bit. We made these feathers that you would see at like national, the wings. And so we made those, and they were up. And the students got to go, and each kid made a feather and got to write a message of perseverance and kindness on theirs. And so, yeah, and the other thing that was really great, just randomly, we found out it was National Have Fun at Work Day. So it worked out in so many ways. So, that was just random. But when we started the process, we told the school, this is what we were interested in doing. We encouraged classroom teachers to get together beforehand and make up a team name. So each, each group had a team name. We had them up on the wall here at the time, over on the bulletin board. And with Ms. Gavin, we were able to create some awards that, would you like to talk a little bit about them?
Yeah, so a variety of different awards that students could work for, let's do on that day. So classroom teachers reviewed the different awards and what that would look like and sound like throughout the Winter Games. So some examples are Snowflake Spirit Awards, so a team showing great spirit, cheerful, having a positive attitude, supportive sidekick, helping other teammates shine. A school integrity award for students who are honest and showed good sportsmanship. And we were able to provide these awards to all of the adults that were running the stations. So throughout the day, they were able to be mindful of certain groups that showed really great teamwork or really a nice positive attitude. So it was really nice for students to think about, um, these treats. And some of them bearing our spotlight treats of respect, of showing good citizenship. And it was really nice way, as Mrs. Weiss said, the closing ceremony, we were able to award each team an award. And again, at the end, we're able to display the teams and their award on the bulletin board.
Yep. And the week before, we also had, they took a picture together. We had it on our rolling, on our TV back here. We were able to have a slideshow rolling where they could see the awards when they were here at lunch. And there was a lot of hooting and hollering during lunch that week. And they got to see their class on the wall, and exciting. So, and then that's pretty much our entire goal. But the other piece is that it was really fun, right, kids? We had a lot of fun that day. So the best way we thought that everyone could really understand was to do some of the activities with us today. Which is why we have a little bit of a setup here. We have two different activities that we are gonna do. We have a curling activity, which we did in the cafeteria here. It's a little bit more like shuffleboard, but it was the best we could do. And then we had a frozen fish toss that we had outside the library. And we've gone ahead and frozen our fish for you all day, so that you could really get the experience. So we'd love for you to join us and come up and try a couple of things. I'm sure the kids will at least do a little bit, right? Okay, so come on up. Please come on up. Yeah, why don't you two go over there? So with our curling, what we did was we had feedback. And we had the kids kind of separate by groups. Ms. Lindsay actually ran our curling session. And she put together a whole video for them to watch beforehand to learn a little bit more about curling. And she also demonstrated, would you like, she doesn't like, oh. She demonstrated on that sign, how to curl, so when you are to stone, right? So as we're going. And so the goal was to get it in the red square or in the yellow. And that's how we went. So we could give it a try. Why don't you each take two? And you can go ahead. And then Ms. Callen will kinda go through the other one. Sorry, sorry. They didn't know we were gonna do this. And then we'll let our school committee members give it a try. Yeah, we're competitive here. Dance already. Can I come try down here? Come on down.
I know.
You never told me.
I'll get right in over here. Try and slide.
Yes. Maybe you got all the stuff here. You could use some pads. Excellent. So each station would last about 10 minutes, and then we would rotate throughout the building. We had a whole system of which hall, which hallways you were allowed to walk down so that you wouldn't run into other groups because you had somebody students.
Everything is one-way hallway, so that was it.
No.
Not as frozen as they were, but we did praise them. This one was outside. The kids are like, right? Come on, take a, take a fish. And all you were trying to do was toss it into the back. You wanna get in there? Feel free. Our goal, we were outside, you were trying to toss it into the underhand.
Underhand, yeah.
Oh. Sometimes it's fun. I believe one of our coordinators ran this outside, Mr. Howard. And one of our special educators.
Are we gonna have a shot?
Sure.
I'll represent the school committee in this. You're in.
So, yep, this was our whole presentation. And we have some photos as well to see. You could see the, thank you for the remarks. Thank you. Yeah, so we have all parts of the school. We had the rock wall open. We had kids working together. They were doing the hot cocoa carry, where they had cups with cotton balls in them. So they weren't actual marshmallows, which probably made everyone sad. Mr. Fritos outside doing a snowball toss, I believe. There's our SEL and a group together, a picture of some people who make flags. And they had posters all around the building, just showing their pride for their team, so.
And I'll have to say, watching the whole day and the relationships, the friendships and the mentorships that just naturally happened have now continued. And, you know, even the one that I, you know, I'm not gonna share names, but just it's a fifth grader, a kindergarten student, in the way that even in the morning at breakfast, where at times, the kindergarten students will go, we're fifth graders. And they're so kind to her and help her, you know, get breakfast. And she's talking away and chatting away. You know, the thing with us, we actually asked the fifth grade student to keep an eye on the kindergarten student just because something was going on. Which is, those are the things that we were looking for. And, you know, I'd like to say, as specific as it's happened, you know, but it's been great. And that was the purpose of it. It was to really connect those adult kids that they wouldn't really, because, you know, it could be a month where a kindergarten teacher or student would see a fork just the way the building was designed. So to force those collisions and those interactions really, you know, it was nice to see. And it played out. And even those groupings, those teams, houses, whatever you wanna call them, are planning things to end the year. So a few events we have coming up that actually kept that going, you know, since the end of January. So it's been really nice, nice to see. Any questions?
Can I make that one more?
Yeah, please.
So I was here for it. And I will say, it art exceeded every goal that you guys had. I thought it was amazing, from the creativity of, you know, just things like that, putting tape down in the cafeteria, to using the ramp for the hockey thing, and the cheer that went out when, you know, you see someone get something. That was going on in the school all day long. And I really just thought, I can't say enough of the things about it. I really thought it was amazing. Thank you guys so much for putting all the work. And then including like the phys ed, but also the art. I mean, just the kids going every day to the day to do one little spot. When I was here the other night, my third grader was like, that's the, that's the spot that I did. And my fifth grader was at the first grade classroom. I thought it was so great. It was actually this little first grade teacher. They're helping each other on the rock walls. You can see right there, some of the older kids helping. Some fifth graders helping first graders, you know, tie their shoe and things like that. And it was literally the whole school was so, so alive that day. And, you know, maybe this is something the other elementary schools might wanna look at. And then just the creativity of the awards, too, making sure, you know, at the end of this great day, they all felt special in some way and that they contributed. And I just run around with a torch and, and, and it was just like every part of it was just.
That was a 3:00 AM.
And I've been to the field days that I know you two also run, and I love those. Actually, it's the first place I met Mrs. Rudolph. We were paired together for the obstacle course at Field Day, but really excellent, excellent job.
So I echo what Jen said. So I intended on coming for about half an hour in the morning. And about 90 minutes later, I think I finally left. The cheering, and you could hear the cheering all over the school. Every kid was just having a fantastic time. I like the, all the games were different, right? Everybody had a different skill. You had kind of showcased that skill that you did have. And then I came back for the afternoon ceremony, which is just as ruckus as the midweek. Like all of the teachers, everybody was all there. And I thought it was a really great way to break up your winter. My question would be for our four game players here, what was your favorite game?
Curling.
Curling. That, that was it.
That was love, yeah.
So the highlight for me was, I went outside when in between rain, and Mr. Maloney was out there watching a kindergartner and a fifth grader that were teamed up and they were doing the snowball toss. They, there was this one pair. They were probably throwing that snowball twenty-five, thirty feet and punching it. The kindergarten at fifth grade. And that just kind of showed the community building there, right? It was, you had the, one of the youngest kids in school, one of the oldest kids in school. And they were throwing that thing around like a baseball four or five times. And I'm watching going, "Watch the school committee try to do that." So, no, it was just, it was really exceptional. And I can't wait to come visit next year because I thought it was fantastic.
Yeah, too. Second annual.
And the design on t-shirts. I mean, we, I really.
No, we've already established that we don't have to redesign it. Yeah, there's only so much fun, you know?
So three quick questions. First one, you just sort of asked. Is this gonna be, is the idea to be an annual tradition?
That's the plan.
Okay. Second, are parents actually invited or do they just sneak in these two?
Well, I think we invited.
School committee was invited, okay.
We invited the school committee, but, you know, it gets tough when you have too many parents here because of like this is why we have this place and have it as one-way only. So when you went, it was.
You can say they stopped you.
I can also speak to that part.
Go ahead.
Also, the way that we were kind of thinking about it, because we do run Field Day and it is very much, I mean, we go to just, we're going to whoever wants to volunteer for Field Day. And we take holiday recordings of each other on this weekend. And then for this, though, we were really trying to focus on truly like getting every kid, every adult, a piece of this time. And like that was the true importance for like, for my students. So why I wanted to do that was that every person knew every student's names. Like they could say, "Thank you," or "Hey, Joe," you know, "I need help doing this," or, you know, "Actually, please." You know, like actually knowing everyone's name so that there is that feeling of importance on both sides, that for students and all the professionals that work here. So that's kind of why at first we were going back and forth on it. We are involved in a lot because we know we love, we get such great responsibility. And we do get the invite. But we were really just trying to figure out maybe what we wanna start about first. Maybe as far as all the changes, but.
I actually think that was great. I think that the teachers, whatever station they were doing, got so involved and so excited. Now it did make it more community.
The teachers were us compared to them as kids.
We do fully rely on parents for our Field Days. And so it was nice to be able to utilize every professional in the building.
And then, and then just last question off topic a little bit. But again, I'm a back parent, so it happens here. The, the, do you have interaction between the grades and other things? Like I know in little school, they had book buddies, you know, these from the early ages. And I, my kids love it. Like I know they like the older kids, they solicit the younger kids. And I'm just curious, do you have that sort of interaction? Like, I know that's more like one-on-one, but.
Yeah, so some of our grade levels participate in book buddies. And those were not the groups they were paired up with for. So in order to like try to make it a little bit different, and again, not every group does. We wanted to change it up in the sense that it's not grade level to grade level. But while Mr. Maloney said, we had a kindergarten and a fifth grade. We also had a fifth grade and a first grade. We had a third grade and a second grade together. And just kind of make it a little bit more, just influence throughout the building versus just those grade level teams.
Excellent. I mean, for anybody out there who might be watching or watching later, I mean, without a doubt, our favorite thing to do is to enjoy these presentations and learn from these presentations. But moreover, to see the expression, not just on the kids' faces, but your faces too. The level of effort that goes into it. And yet, look at the smiles on your faces and your reactions. This is phenomenal. You know, once again, our schools are a model for our community. And you guys have just done an outstanding job. I say you guys, you're included in that. I mean, just the level of effort you guys put in and just the smiles that you guys have in participating and probably your desire to do it again next year too. It's just fantastic. So thank you to everybody. What would you change? What would you do differently for next year?
We have this.
We asked for feedback. We, we got some adult feedback that was very specific. I think that something that we're gonna probably look to change would be, we might change some of the events and figuring out different ways to.
The spacing to.
Make it work. Yes.
Well, for a first effort, it sounds like that's great, but less than one.
Right, exactly.
Is there a dunk can in the district that is cool?
In the winter, definitely in the winter. You guys have a nice bath. Yes.
So you guys, we are, if you flood the cafeterium, they get some freezing equipment here for real.
We did an ice skating one, but we bought, we bought big sliders to make them skate. So we didn't do anything to the building.
Awesome, outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now. I'm gonna go to my third grade team and four third graders to present some projects for you. And it's Mrs. Anthony, Mrs. Frida, Mrs. Coffin, Mrs. Coco, and Mrs. Gavin are here. So we'll let you guys take it away.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mrs. Anthony, third grade teacher. I'm here with Mrs. Frida.
Hi, everyone.
And my student, Maimai. Say hi, Maimai.
Hi.
And my student, Alex.
Hello.
And we're going to be presenting our traditions project that we did.
So we did this project back in the fall. We started it in November. It took a while to complete from start to finish. So we started with students bringing home a double-sided worksheet that had them interviewing someone in their family about some sort of a tradition, whether it be a celebration that their family is involved in, an event that they go to, or a holiday. So the range of traditions that were shared were awesome. It was so nice. No one was doing exactly the same thing. Everyone kind of brought their own family twist into it. So first, they interviewed a family member. And they had a couple of weeks to find a family member, think about that tradition, answer those questions. And then they brought it back to school. And when they brought the information back, they were able to rewrite those answers into dialogue format and write a script, which they then animated using Scratch Junior. Scratch Junior is an app that we have on iPass. Students are able to add backgrounds, characters, and use Blockly, which is a block code language, to animate their characters and write code. They did a really awesome job of coding their animations. And they got to present their creation to their peers.
Hi, my name is Michael Bosby. And I will be presenting my traditions Scratch Junior project. I enjoyed this project because it allowed me to share my family's tradition and learn about my classmates' traditions. I also enjoyed, I also enjoyed using Scratch Junior for code.
Hi, my name is Alex Tyler. And I will also be presenting my Scratch Junior project. Besides learning about my classmates' families' tradition, I enjoyed the coding aspect of this project. First, we needed to create the characters and settings. Then we needed to create our dialogue to send to each character by using the color-coded envelopes to send the message. We used a root pick to stay organized and complete all aspects of the project. Let's take a look at our projects.
Hi, my.
Hi, my name is Michael.
Hello, I'm Michael's mom, and my name is Michael.
We are here to tell you about our family's tradition. Our family's tradition is to celebrate the Ganesh festival.
We celebrate this holiday in August or September, according to the English calendar. I celebrate it with my family. It takes place in our house.
We have been celebrating this tradition forever. To celebrate, we invite Ganesh to our house with a puja and offer Ganesh sweets.
Some special food and activities we have are wearing new clothes, wearing new bells, and clapping. Some food we eat are called madak, shiri, kandak, and woodi.
Celebrating this tradition is special to me because it makes me feel, because my dad's birthday is on the same day when the holiday falls in August. It makes me feel joyful and connected.
Thanks for watching our project. We hope you enjoy it.
Do you want to go back home?
Wait, is this camera still rolling?
Hi, hey, Henry.
Hi, Alex. Does your family have any traditions?
Yes, we do. My family celebrates Chinese New Year.
That sounds awesome. What do you do on Chinese New Year?
So we head to one of our friends' houses on Chinese New Year.
That sounds like a lot of fun.
My family has been celebrating Chinese New Year for the past three years since we moved to Massachusetts from Florida. But for my whole family from Taiwan, it's been going on for forever.
That's interesting. I had no idea. How do you celebrate this tradition?
We celebrate this tradition by eating traditional food and wearing red or blue clothes and giving red envelopes.
Wow, those are fantastic ways to celebrate the holiday. Why is this tradition special to you?
It is special to me because it reminds me of Taiwan.
Taiwan sounds like a very special place to you. Do you have any special foods or activities?
Yes, we do. We have fish, rice, cakes, dumplings, and tangerines. It's a traditional feast.
That sounds delicious.
Well, I should be going now. See you, Henry.
Bye, Alex. Thanks for telling me all about your tradition. Yeah, so what we used for the coding is, they have, these are just two screen jobs. Maimai and Alex both have them. So what they had to do was, they set up their characters. And then Maimai has some different parts of her setting that she added in here. And what each student has to do is they have to use these speech bubbles to enter their text. But they can only fit a certain amount of characters for each one. So they have to plan out what they're saying and how much they can fit in. They can't be halfway through a word. So they add in their speech bubbles. And then to send the message to the next character, they have to use an envelope, which you can see right over here. So they send it off with a closed envelope, like you're sending something in the mail. And then they, what they have to do is click on the second character and they have to drag down an open envelope of the same color. So that means you're opening that color envelope. That means you're receiving the message. And then that character can respond. So it took a lot of work going back and forth between each of the characters. A lot of trial and error. We worked on it for a couple of weeks and it, it all came together. And they both did such a fabulous job on it. They worked so hard and it was, it was great to see. And it's really impressive now. I've used Scratch Junior for a couple of years now. But it's so impressive to see them jumping into it and just knowing what to do. And the ability that they can do it independently is incredible to see. So they both did such a great job. What's really great about digital learning is that we can take the standards that we're learning in the classroom, that we're doing in the classroom, and just present it in a different way. So there were tons of standards that this project met. But I wanted to showcase one of our speaking and listening standards that appears on our standard-based report card presenting on a topic. Solution, finding solutions to a problem, recounting personal experiences with facts, descriptive details, and using appropriate vocabulary. So that was, that was great to see. Students had to stay on task and complete the assignment in a timely manner, which we only have small chunks of time to speak for digital learning. So we had to work on it in the classroom, work on it in digital learning, use that time wisely. And then students worked really hard. They're doing really well in third grade with their typing. So just getting all that typed into the iPass. And they, they did a great job. Very proud of them. We are very proud of them. So to address the digital learning and computer science areas, we wanted to just discuss the fact that the kids were able to individually create an algorithm to solve a problem. For example, they moved characters. They wrote code to have the characters have a dialogue and move. They had to do some debugging. They had to detect and correct logical errors in different algorithms. For programming and development, they individually created and tested a program in an environment that is block-based, that's Scratch Junior for you. And they also, again, did a lot of repetition. And they wrote conditional programming using different blocks. They debugged and corrected simple errors. And they recognized that programs starts with a value, a starting value, which is the flag for the envelope that they need to work with. Thank you very much. I'm going to share with you another project that we did in the Miller Inc. with Ms. Lindsay. This is our third grade passion project. So what is a passion project? It's one of my favorite projects that we do in third grade. It is a self-directed learning experience where students are able to choose any topic they are interested in to learn a little bit more about. It could be an animal, it could be a person, it could be a place or a thing. The options are endless. It allows students to take ownership of their learning, develop real-world skills like problem-solving, time management, as Mr. Frida said, being able to use an online database to look up information, drop down notes, and then take that information to put together a presentation. And then also connects classroom knowledge to your personal interests. So it's really nice to see student choice as well as engagement with this project. So this project, along with like the other one that we had, goes along with the law of our third grade standards. Writing, speaking, and listening, approaches of learning, a lot of them are very similar. The ones I kind of wanna highlight are like the writing process that they have to go through. So they have to plan, revise, and then go back and edit at an independent level. And then writing those informed pieces to convey the topics that they chose. And then also speaking clearly at that piece, since they report themselves, which you will see. And making sure that they are clear, speaking at a good volume for everyone to understand. So also, the digital learning standards that we look at, they use PebbleGo, which is a library catalog that we use a lot within our classrooms. And they can get all that information from it. They locate it and they gather that information. And we really work on paraphrasing and situations as you will see next. So first and foremost, students receive a mini lesson for Ms. Lindsay to learn a little bit about plagiarism, what it is, how we can prevent plagiarism, and why it's important that we do so.
how we can prevent plagiarism, and why it's important that we do so through the use of citations. So students are able to go through Google Sites presentation where they watch different videos, listen to different audio, where they're able to learn these big words of plagiarism, citation, and how they're able to learn about it, but also applying what they learned to this particular project.
And as I mentioned, they use PebbleGo to find these topics. At first, they look through PebbleGo, they find a few topics that they want to be in, that they're interested in. And then they pick the one and they say why they want to learn about it on the little paper that we give them. They complete a graphic organizer that is reflective of the organization of PebbleGo. So they can follow along really easily and at their own independent level. And then they use their notes to create that final project on Book Creator to show their learning.
So once they have their books all set up with their titles, their writing below each page, they also learn how to add pictures. And then once it's all set up, students are able to record their audio. It helps them, the speech helps practice their reading fluency, being able to read fluently, say loud and proud, and also nays and slows. And then also this helps them build confidence as they record. They're able to record, listen, does it sound good? Okay, if not, they'll re-record before submitting.
And then our last step, which we haven't gotten to yet with these passion projects, and I'm really, really excited about this part, is they get to share their passion projects with their classmates. So Ms. Lindsay compiles all of them into a document that they get to access and they get to look at all of their classmates' books. And we tell them to try to pick books that they don't know a lot about, so they can learn something from it. So they put the student's name, the book title, and then also just one thing that they learned. So they get to look at each other's books and celebrate the project that they came up with. And we're going to have others give it. So Anna, Bunny, go on out.
Hi, Anna. My name is Anna Torey and I'm from Mrs. Foeck's third grade class. My passion project is all about Oswald. I chose this topic because I want to learn more about wild cats. And Oswald's a wonder. I enjoy the passion project because I love to work and create things that is important to me.
The wonders of Oswalds by Anna. Body, they weigh up to fifteenth of thirty-five pounds. And they have tan or pale yellow fur. They also have dark markings and have stripes on their foreheads and cheeks. Habitat, they live in Central and South America, and some in Southern Texas. Also, some live in the rainforests and mountains and hide in the trees and bushes. Food, Oswalds are nocturnal and hunt at night. They eat mice, fomets, and also hunt rabbits and tosums. Life style, females have born to two kittens. Babies have gray fur and black markings on their coat and live up to fifteen years. Fun facts, kittens have blue eyes from born. Eyes turn around when they turn three months old. Two Oswalds don't have the same markings and they climb trees to hunt for monkeys.
Hi, my name is Hannah Goff and I'm from Miss Gavin's third grade class. My passion project is about tornadoes. I chose this topic because tornadoes are very fascinating and I thought it would be helpful to learn about them. My favorite part was watching the video to help me understand the different types of tornadoes. I am proud of my project and I'm excited to share it with you and my classmates.
Swim, swish, destroy, tornadoes by Hannah G. What are they? Tornadoes are strong windstorms. They are also dangerous for most of wind. They come from clouds that rest on the sky. How do they happen? First off, tornadoes usually happen in the spring and summer months. The wind spins very fast, then they turn into a frontal cloud. Where do they happen? They mostly happen in tornado alley, but they can happen all over the world. They're most common in Central USA. What do they do? Tornadoes can destroy anything in their path. They rip off roofs, cars get smashed, and even search trucks can get blown away. Tornado safety. When a tornado happens, the first thing you might hear is sirens outside that give warning, places to go with a basement or a windowless burn.
You guys are all amazing. I'm just really impressed with the two different projects that you could combine so many strands of learning, so many parts of academics while totally getting to have some fun too. So excellent job.
Great, great public speaking. That's a very challenging thing to come to a room full of adults and speak like that. Maybe we might have a button audio about superstars. Absolutely great. How did you guys feel about doing stuff that you care about? Did that help in your court in doing this project? Did you like doing it? Did you learn anything new when you were doing it?
I looked at, I looked, actually, I put myself on the border, so I haven't really had time to say anything else. So I got my, just moved to school with a group of foreigners, so I'm in my comfort zone. So I thought I would just go. I don't know why I chose this topic. I just thought it was my grandmother.
Great job.
I decided to go with Oswalds because there's a lot of wild cats out there and a lot of them. And because they're just, I like cats and yeah, so I just wanted to learn more about wild cats. And one of them, like I said, is what it was Oswalds.
I chose Chinese New Year because in Taiwan, Chinese New Year is a really big tradition. It's bigger than Christmas, Halloween, bigger than all of those other traditions. And then there we have fireworks, dragonflies, and fireworks, and nature and that.
I chose the interestable because I was, it's a really interesting idea and it was very so attractive as well.
Great job, everybody. I know I heard the passion project you shared with all the other classes. The traditions project, was that shared with everybody?
Yeah, so they went through, and similar to the little slip that you saw for the passion project, they got to go through the entire class and see everyone. And then they would write something they learned from, I think, four students that were in here.
That's great. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
I'll want to comment with a question. Comment is, I've been very fortunate in my life, I've worked with a wild number of people across a number of cultures and different countries. And I've been really fortunate to actually experience some of these myself. And you accurately portrayed every element of it. I love it. Made me hungry. This is fantastic. Do the kids, like, how do you figure out, does everybody do each of these things? Do they split up? Like, how do you determine?
All the kids do both.
All the kids do both.
So they were spaced out.
Wow. Again, the level of effort that goes through, not just for the kids, but for you guys, fantastic. Thank you so much for everything.
We want to thank Ms. Lindsay. We couldn't do it without her.
I'd like to visit the vibe back here. But it is, it's nice to see the collaboration between classroom teachers and digital learning. It also doesn't hurt that we have a former digital learning teacher teaching now in third grade. So the team gets that support quite a bit. But it is, it's fantastic to see. And hopefully, just a small snippet that we showed here tonight shows what we try and do here every day at this batch. And along with the academic piece of it, this relationship piece of it, it's physical, the social, emotional. And we want it to be a place where everybody wants to come and learn and to grow and to be the best versions of themselves. And we have wonderful people here to facilitate that work and promote our mission and vision here in the district. And we're all proud of our students and our teachers and all the great work across the district. So we want to thank you for the opportunity to work in those reading and allow us to and support us to be the best version of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you to all of you for doing such a great job presenting tonight and for being a part of all of the great work that goes on this year. When I was doing some interviews with older students for the high school principal, one of the things they had said to us was, you know, "School sometimes feels the same every day." What can we do, you know, what can we do to have things different? And I think that afternoon, I came down and met with Mr. Maloney and he pitched this idea about winter games. Or he kind of said, oh, by the way, a couple of weeks ago. But I was able to be here too. It was so fantastic. What a great day. I want to recognize Ms. Weiss and Ms. Calvin, both leaders in our district, teacher leaders, doing their own studies to advance educational leadership, bringing that knowledge back to the schools. So important. I just want to acknowledge that we have extra special digital learning expertise in third grade. But it sounded like Mr. Fieda was speaking the standards and the coding pretty well as well when I was up there.
Thank you.
Some great stuff with lots of excellent projects there. Students, you should be so proud of yourselves. You did a wonderful job. We always talk about, you know, we have great scores here, but we're not teaching to the test in those reading. And this is a great example. When the teachers were able to make that connection between the standards and the projects, we're coming up with engaging projects and getting kids excited every day. And when you do that and you learn those standards at a high level, scores, standardized testing, things take care of themselves. But the real part is the real learning that the students have. You were the really showpiece that tonight. Thank you all for bringing that to our attention. So thank you so much.
And Mr. Maloney, you're no longer the new principal, so you gotta step up the seniority.
You're right in the middle now, right?
You're right in the middle.
Right in the middle, that's why we are.
Easy pie.
Bring it up, bring it in.
Well, thank you guys for presentation, for everything you showed. It's fantastic. We'll take a couple of minutes while things break down. Everybody's welcome to say if they wish to. But welcome to go too.
Thank you.
Thank you.